It is 6:00 PM. We are going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Ms. Garcia, can we please have a roll call?
Mayor Walter.
President.
Vice Mayor Woolbridge.
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins.
Here.
Councilmember Galen.
Here.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. We're going to begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, the God, and the principle of liberty and justice for all. We will begin with a call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. The council rules limit public comment to three minutes, and individual council members may respond to criticism by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that an item be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss nor take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless matters are properly noticed for discussion and for legal action. At this time, we do have one call to the public, and that is Mr. Robert Kramer. Can you please come up, sir? How are you tonight?
I'm doing fine, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I just want to address the council. I've been dealing with the -- I have lived in the area for approximately four years. I bought a home up in Caliente del Sol. As I purchased it, I had in the back of my mind that I wanted to add on to my property. Several people over there have done that. It has looked very nice. That's what I wanted to do, was a very nice addition on to my property. I initially had put in a drawing to the planning department back in August. I did not get an okay from them. It was done in two different sections. There was a foundation, and then there's an up for the building of the structure itself. I do not have an okay from them. They have put me off. They have -- the other day, I was in their office. Chris was not there, but Michael was there, and I told him I was coming to address you and the other members. They told me that if I didn't leave there, he was going to have me arrested. Yes. He put his hand out like that and said, "You get out of here right now. I'm going to have you arrested." And I said, "Oh, my God." You know, I'm a citizen of Arizona, and I live in Florence, and I come into a public building, and you're going to have me arrested? I haven't done a thing, you know? He's very hot-tempered. He doesn't know anything what he's doing unless Chris is with him.
Can I just intervene for one moment? I'm sorry to interrupt during call to the public. However, have you had a chance to talk to Chris afterwards?
I've already talked to this lady here. I've made a complaint to her. Chris, I think, is very much aware of what's going on. He was out last Friday, and this is when this instance happened. And I wasn't even in his office. As soon as he was talking to another gentleman, as soon as he started addressing me, he told me that I was -- that I had told my manager that the property setbacks were now four feet something. I never even talked to my manager. He came off very confrontatious with me. I don't believe that man should have his job to speak to a citizen of Florence like this. I still do not have any -- I have sent my plans in. They've had it for probably six weeks now. All I want to do is start building. I want to order my sheetrock. I want to order my doors. I want to order my windows. I get nothing back from him. He is either one of them. They say, "Oh, we're going to take it under consideration." I think I'm being blackballed, to be telling you the truth. And being so rudely spoken to, I feel is not correct at all.
Okay. I do understand tonight, and I appreciate you coming out. I would defer, and I'm sure if you give your information, I have it right here. I'll give it to Christopher Salas, and he will contact you. And just so this way, we can get the whole perspective of what happened.
I'd really rather not speak to Michael anymore.
Okay.
I don't want to speak to him anymore.
Chris is amazing. He definitely takes time. He came out to your community last week to speak, as well as this past Saturday. He came all the way out from his residence to talk to Florence Gardens. So we definitely want to work with you, and
I appreciate that.
I'll make sure that he has your information and contact.
I think he's very knowledgeable, but the other gentleman has no quorum whatsoever.
Okay. Thank you so much. All right. Is there anybody else this evening that came to speak at call to the public that did not have an opportunity to fill out a form? All right. Thank you. Item number six is our consent agenda. All items on a consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is authorization to purchase -- I apologize. Let me reread this. Item A is authorized to contract with Legend Technical Services of Arizona Incorporated using the cooperative purchase agreement from the city of Tempe, contract number WD-15-113-04 for potable water, wastewater, and soil testing services to ensure the town is compliant with current regulations. B is approval of accepting the register of demands ending October 21st, 2017, in the amount of $2,927,759.85. Item C is approval of the November 6th and November 20th, 2017, town council regular meeting minutes. Does any member of the public or council have anything that they would like removed at this time from the consent agenda? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Item seven is new business. Resolution number 1651-17. This is the discussion approval and disapproval of a resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 34, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents, Mr. Christopher Salas.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of council. As described, this is for Unit 34 of Anthem at Merrill Ranch. They are 87 single-family residential lots proposed for this 21.9 acre subdivision. The result density for this particular unit will be 3.957 unit per acre. The resultant overall density for AMR based on the final plat approval to date will be 3.085 dwelling units per acre. The PUD zoning permits an overall single-family residential density of 3.5 dwelling units per acre for AMR. Once again, as is recent plats have been, 42
I don't know why or anything.
Forty-two feet of right-of-way that will accommodate ADA facilities, meaning the sidewalks. This has gone through planning and zoning on October 11, 2017. The town of Florence is Public Works and the Fire Department, as well as the Police Department reviews the pre-plats and are part of the pre-application meetings. At this point, if I have -- if there are any questions? If not, that kind of concludes my presentation.
Are there any members of council that have any question at this time?
With that, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt resolution number 1651-17. A resolution of the town of Florence, Pinal County, Arizona, approving the final plat for Anthem at Merrill Ranch, Unit 34, and authorizing execution by the town manager of supporting documents.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign, and motion carries. Thank you. Item B is discussion approval and disapproval to enter into a contract with Centimarc for roof replacement at the south wastewater treatment plant canopy roof, north wastewater treatment plant lower office roof, north wastewater treatment plant chemical building roof, and the development services building roof using the Mohave contract number 13XC-TMK-0417 in an amount of $62,014.65 plus a 15% contingency for a total not to exceed the amount of $71,320.
Background on this project. When I first accepted the job of Public Works Director, Town Engineer, one of the areas of the facilities department came to me was these three roofs in particular. They are in poor condition and need to be replaced. Maybe a little out of line, but again, I'd just like to thank Mr. Tom Selay for the excellent, excellent work that he's provided this town and helping me get these projects underway in here. We are using a Mohave contract, so this is a cooperative purchasing. It has been reviewed for our town's compliance for the purchasing policy, as well as applicable state laws, and has been reviewed by the town's attorney. With that, I have nothing additional to add.
We appreciate that. Is there any members of council that have any questions? With that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize a contract with Centimarc for roof replacement of the south wastewater treatment plant canopy roof, north wastewater treatment plant lower office roof, north wastewater treatment plant chemical building roof, and the development services building roof using the Mohave contract number 13XC-TMK-0417 in an amount of $62,014.65 plus a 15% contingency for a total not to exceed amount of $71,320.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Item C is discussion approval and disapproval to enter into a contract with Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated for first street paving and improvements in an amount not to exceed $674,447.50.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. I am very excited to be kicking off one of our first large public works road projects. Once again, on my second day of working here, the town manager packed me up for two straight days and drove me around and showed me every single thing not wrong, less than ideal in the town of Florence. And this was one of the areas that this road was in poor condition at the time. It had missed -- we had missed -- the town as a whole had missed the opportunity to provide a preventive maintenance product on that road, and it is definitely falling apart. We started off after our on-call engineers were selected. We did not have any on-call engineers when I first started here. All those contracts were terminated slightly before I got here. We went through the procurement process of getting on-call engineers on board, and then we started off this being one of the very first projects kicking off the solicitation, obviously after the council approved those contracts. This particular contract was given to Wilson Engineers through a competitive process where everyone submitted proposals, as well as cost estimates. So once again, when we do our on-call engineering, we evaluate on several criteria: schedule, cost, quality of the submittal as far as the qualifications under state law. We look at all of those. And once again, I'm very proud to sit there and say that, as a general rule, we often save the taxpayers a considerable amount of money using this competitive method. There are some others across the state now that have adopted this method that we've used now for approximately 10 years. This project went through several iterations. We've looked at storm drain. It was not possible. We could not do a storm drain -- implement a storm drain because of the shallowness of the existing sewer and sewer services. That was the first round of improvements we looked at, was mitigating the drainage. So before the project even got started, we looked at a full drainage analysis, starting at, I believe it would be Butte North, this entire area to figure out comprehensively. And we looked at the drainage, and then we decided that we couldn't do that. So we have implemented some six-inch curb along the way, and then we have implemented five-foot sidewalk, where the sidewalk is going to have to be replaced to meet federal FHWA requirements, federal laws, as well as we have re-profiled the entire road to eliminate any low spots. We've also worked with the First Baptist Church on some improvements in their -- along their area, as well as the actual parking lot that is a town-owned right-of-way, but it is a conveyance corridor for the drainage, and so we've worked with them. And we will be doing additional public outreach, in particular with the Baptist Church, once we get the project underway. There's not a lot of residents, but they're all very important to us. Like I said, we held a public outreach during the actual project. The newspaper was there. So we've done public outreach, and Christian Collins, who's in the audience, will be the project manager of this as we move into the construction phase, and he handled the engineering as well on the project from the engineering contract as well. So his big issue has always been make sure that we have public outreach, public outreach, and we actually had our pre-bid for Florence Gardens 4 and 5 today out in the field, and that was one of the areas he emphasized. All of these residents are going to have to figure out how to get from their house to where they can park their car, and that is very key. So the same thing was discussed in this project. The contingency, I'd like to address that before. During the design of this project, we had a geotechnical investigation done on the project, and we had one soils boring that was slightly lower than the rest, and rather than doing one pavement section the whole way and costing more money to add for the additional thickness for that one low boring, I worked -- my background is in geotechnical engineering. I guess I have a pretty sordid past. So we decided to analyze that once all the asphalt was removed, and then we would look at just mitigating that one area rather than costing the project the entire limits of it. So that contingency specifically for that, we did add three bid alternates in there, so we do have options to hold the contractor accountable on a per-unit cost. So we feel comfortable that $100,000 in contingency will cover this. Two of the options were considerably under the $100,000, and the third option that we have no plan to initiate or implement is over $100,000.
All right. Thank you for that detailed explanation. Appreciate that. Any members of council have any questions regarding it?
Yes. It's my understanding you're going to completely redo the street from the highway all the way into Main Street.
That would be fair.
Sidewalks?
No, sir. No, sir. In areas where we're able to serve the curb and gutter, which is a majority of the project, it will only be a full-depth reconstruction of the asphalt. We did not -- due to the budget, we were not able to necessarily rip out every ounce of concrete along this project. That would have been over probably a $2 million project. So we kept the existing curb and gutter along the way. We've added some additional six-inch curb and gutter where we have some drainage that would typically overflow the four-inch roll curb, and then where that area is being modified, there will be five-foot sidewalk just in that area. But the -- most of all of the curb and gutter sidewalk is staying in place.
Okay, because there are dips up and down, so you're going to level that out, though?
Yes. We -- the -- I think I'll take the time. The key to this project when looking east to west in either direction, the actual curb and gutter is not symmetrical in height. So it makes doing a project like this very difficult from an engineering position. I mean, I've done this from the private sector and the public sector. This is always very challenging to now implement a new design with so many constraints. So we spent at least three iterations between Christian and I, working with the engineer to implement the way that we wanted it done.
I just want to compliment you for getting this done. I thank myself and several other of the council. This has been a hot project for us over the years.
Well, we pushed very hard, and like I said, I'm proud -- very proud that this project now is bid-ready. It has been complete, and now we are moving towards the construction phase.
Thank you.
Chris, you're not going to be straightening out this west end, are you? It's just going to follow the same path? You know how it kind of juts like that?
Are you talking about end to Main Street?
In front of the fire station.
No, the chicane will not have been addressed for the reasons of right-of-way and just cost. It is not being addressed.
To me, it's a little bit dangerous. I know we haven't had an accident there, but, you know, when you're not familiar with the area and you're traveling in the evening or late-time hours, it is kind of a -- puts you off whenever you approach.
Well, to defend the people that aren't in the room, the town manager did ask me to look at it, and we did look at it. It just was not cost-effective, again, due to right-of-way and reconstructing that entire intersection. It was very cost-prohibitive.
Okay. If there are no more questions or comments, we need a motion.
Make a motion to award paving contract Sunland Asphalt and Construction Incorporated for first street paving and improvements in an amount not to exceed $674,447.50.
Second.
We have a motion in multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item D is approval -- discussion approval and disapproval of scheduling a joint work session with the town council, Historic District Advisory Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission on Monday, January 8, 2018, to discuss the Town of Florence Code Enforcement Manual and the 2012 International Codes.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Just very briefly, a topic that we've been working on for some months now is both a code enforcement manual, as well as the updates to the 2012 International Codes. And we thought it would be best served to have, again, a joint meeting with everybody so that all opinions can be heard. I know in other communities that I've worked at, one of the areas of concern is that the P&amp;Z or a different committee is not -- their comments aren't heard, and I wanted to make sure that we had all parties in one room and we could discuss these very important documents. Again, the code enforcement manual as a whole is not changing any of our ordinance. It's just a document that the layperson can read, and its staff can work with the layperson at the counter and say, "Here are the ordinance, and this is how they work, and here's the understanding of what a high priority, low priority, mid-level priority is." Like, how long should a person wait to have a property owner clear stagnant water? I think the code enforcement considers that a mid-level priority and gives somebody three to five days to take care of that. So it gives, again, expectations. It's just a -- but it does not change any of our current ordinances. It does -- it gives the -- it gives us all an opportunity to understand the council's expectations, though, as it relates to passive code enforcement versus active code enforcement versus some of the things that are hot topics for the council to address. What are the things that you think are the priority for staff? Since the promotion on July 1st, we've definitely been more active on our code enforcement. We have definitely sent a lot more letters as of recent. We have not condemned any buildings as of yet, but we've been very active, and so I'm very proud to say that we're moving in that direction. As it relates to the 2012 International Codes, we are having a meeting on that staff-wise on Wednesday, and we are working on finalizing those documents. So this would also give us a great date to work towards those documents to be completed.
Thank you for that explanation. I would also like to encourage those in the audience, as well as at home, if you're interested in serving on either of those committees, the Historic District Advisory Commission or the Planning and Zoning Commission, this is an excellent meeting to come to just to see the inner workings and to gain deeper understanding of how they operate. On this specific item, is there any questions or concerns regarding the date and time?
I'm assuming that prior to that meeting, we'll get some kind of documentation about what's going on?
Go ahead. I couldn't hear you. Can you speak into the mic?
I'm assuming that we'll get some kind of documentation prior to the meeting?
Yes. We will send out two documents with a watermark draft for all the party's reviews.
Good. Thank you.
Do we know what time is being proposed for this work session?
6 o'clock.
Thank you.
All right. We have discussion. Now we need a motion for approval of scheduling a joint work session on Monday, January 18, 2018, at 6:00 PM.
Make a motion that we have a joint work session with the town council, the Historic District Advisory Commission, and the Planning and Zoning Commission on Monday, January 8, 2018, to discuss the Town of Florence Code Enforcement Manual and the 2012 International Codes.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, and the motion carries. Thank you very much. Managers report.
I'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation and all departments who were involved in and all nonprofits who were involved in both the Junior Prada and the Christmas event, Christmas on Main. They were lovely events, and we couldn't have done it without you, so thank you very much. Also, want to put out there that we do have boards and commissions open. We're advertising on the town's website, as well as the town's Facebook page. So if anyone's interested in volunteering with the town of Florence, please take a look at those positions and get in your application prior to December 30. Also want to remind everyone that we have one regular meeting in December, so this will be our only meeting, regular meeting, in December. And with that, I'd like to wish both council and staff, as well as the residents, a happy holidays, and to let everyone know that next year will be a little bit different for the town of Florence, as we are losing one of our team members, Jess Knutson. He is both the face of Florence for regional issues, as well as the voice of Florence as our PIO. So it is a sad day for Florence that we do lose our team member. He will be the city manager of Lake Havasu, and at this time, I would like to open the floor to him in case he has any comments he'd like to say to council.
I just want to thank everyone for the opportunity. There's a lot of memories been created over the last 13 years, a lot of friendships been created over the last 13 years, and the town's had a lot of successes. And so thank you for everything, and I know Florence is in great hands moving forward, and I can't wait to see what's next.
That's everything, Mayor.
Thank you. And thank you, Jess. You will be deeply missed, and I know that you will do great things. I know where you're going, but I don't know if I can say it, so you will do great things there. All right. We also have our department reports. Is there anybody on council that has a question for any of the department heads? Kristen?
I had a question for you, Chris, about your department report, in particular, the Mosaic Nazarene Church. When I looked at the report here, it says all permits are expired. It goes on to detail some things. Is that still accurate, or is that inaccurate information?
Ah, boy, this must be a coincidence. I was actually searching -- I have a draft email on my computer right now that I didn't get to finish and send, but I do know there's been -- so would you like an update? Is that my understanding?
Yeah. If this isn't accurate, yes, please.
I don't need it. As it relates to the Mosaic Church, the plan review was completed by all departments, and it was agreed that we would reinstate the permit. The -- for everybody who is not part of the project, to make it fair, I guess, is that when the church re-initiated their project, the permits had expired as indicated, and so the town had the ability rightfully to request a full resummittal, as well as the fees. Where I've worked previously, when staff was the same staff, we've always just re-initiated, reinstated the permit. The problem with this project is that all the staff is new. That's not necessarily the applicant's fault. It isn't. But it's also not the town's fault, either that he didn't complete the project on time or the organization. So we had a meet in the middle, and we reviewed the plan somewhat free of charge and are willing to reinstate the permit. We are waiting on the church to submit contractor information so that we can complete the permit. Again, it's been probably well more than 45 to 60 days at this point, and the project hasn't. Jean John Kemp was out there today meeting with them, there are some, some of the construction was never inspected by the town, specifically the fire, the, what John calls the underground fire lines that serve dedicated, the sprinklers, hydrants, the riser room, all of that infrastructure was not. And so based on instruction, John is gonna require that testing to be completed. So for example, you don't want corrosion around the, the Megalux system, so they have to wrap those and we don't have any of these inspections, so they are in the process of that. The design review is still underway, it's never been completed, that I, my understanding, are there some comments still pending on that? So very much in the process, but I was planning on sending an email out to, again, the applicant, letting him know, here's all the things where we're at, please. Just to make sure, oftentimes there's, there's misunderstanding, again, while I think our staff does an excellent job in communicating, sometimes people hear what they hear or they remember what they remember from weeks ago. And so I often, when a project languishes a bit, we often resend an email saying, here's the status of this, is there, is there any misunderstanding, what can staff do to help out? I called Mr. Smallage today, for example, these are things that my staff and I typically do to follow up with people, to make sure if we need a little bit of a push to get people over, over the hump.
Mr. Smallage made any, any progress since we're still on this report?
No, he hasn't. And so I reminded him, I said, we both agree, we put those timetables together that it's gonna be a very challenging project and you agreed it was gonna be challenging, so the fact that you've already spent some time and not gone anywhere, I said, you understand that all these timeframes incorporated my review and my permitting process? And he, he agreed and you know, in his typical southern way, kinda laughed it off and I can only, you know, like I said, I told him I will be following up and he thanked me, he thanked me for following up with him, but this is our, this is our typical process, we, we do this on all kind of projects. I, maybe again, inappropriately, but I, in today's world, often use text messages to let people know because they're not as great about checking their email system, so people like at the river bottom. I resp, I often, you know, check with him on where he's at and stuff like that, so he knows, again, he's got an advocate outside of the project, normal flow, he has someone like me and I've told him, you know, you just call me if you're running any problems on a project like that. Just similar examples across the board, that's our typical fashion is to make sure that people aren't lost in the process. And it's just, it is, it's unfortunate to say, but people sometimes forget if they don't get on it right away where their process is. Whoa, do I need this permit, do I need load calculations, do I need a, does my contractor need a business license in the Town of Florence? Again, there are multiple, multiple areas to kind of check off the boxes and we're putting together handouts for the residential side and we're trying to put some more things in the commercial, but the, the end-all answer to this is that it takes a good commercial contractor to do commercial work.
Thank you so much for your information, I really appreciate that. I also want to just commend you in all the outreach that you've done, not just with this project, with other projects, like you said, every time that we have an issue, it seems like you're right on top of it with reaching out to the public. I really appreciate that and you're really a star player and really appreciate all, everything that you've done here, so I just wanted to thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I want to compliment you on your, you know, what, the extra effort you're putting out, but yeah, we need to make sure, because in the past, you know the problems we've had, he said, she said, I, you know, I was told this, I was told that. I'm sure you're documenting the dates and, and what the meetings were about and your communications, so it's all documented because I know Mr. Smallage accused us of holding him up, which was wrong. And, and here again, he's dragging his feet apparently, but you know, yeah, I just want the people to know that, you know, we're, we're trying to help people move forward and we've got a great staff that are going above and beyond. And I, I think, I think we're doing a good job right now and I compliment you and your staff.
Standard operating procedure for us. Again, this is a little different probably than other areas, but for me, what I was taught by, again, Daryl Wood, was always, pick up a phone, Chris, call the person. You, if you can, drive down there and see a person, it makes a huge difference specifically on the context that's lost in an email, because especially on the building safety side, sir, everything sounds abrasive on the building safety side. This is the reasons why, you know, and it just is never friendly. So on, on that end, I always pick up a phone, I always try to stop by if we can, and I know it does take a lot out of my, out of my schedule, but I do try to stop by, especially again, I stop by the realtors pretty often and make sure I'm over communicating with them. And then after that, we always follow up with an email based on the phone conversation. So yes, we're definitely stepping that up.
On the Mosaic Church project, is there, what's the time limit on that?
They haven't, they, they haven't reinstated the permit, so they'll have six months from any past inspection, so the very first window, they'll have six months. So let's assume on the 179th day, if they get a rough electrical inspection, then they get another six months. So for, for, for a permit to expire, usually it's a, it's a pretty interesting circumstance, they've just literally stopped the work. But any project that's moving on, usually you can get a past inspection done somewhere in a six-month timeframe, but it does have to pass. It cannot be a failed inspection, but yeah, past inspection, yeah.
Well, I know that they, they haven't been doing things properly, I know that, on the whole project so far, it seemed like they keep, you know, doing stuff without inspections and, and taking for granted on their parking and things like that, rather than, you know, following the rules. So I just want everybody to know that we're, everybody out there in the public to know that we, we're, we're trying to work with these people, all of our people in town. And it's, nine out of 10 times, it's, it's the person that's got the project going that's not following through on their agreements, so.
You know, you know, it's, it's.
And it's a shame, but that's what it is.
While I agree, I have challenged the staff that I supervise, that we really knew, we really need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to make people successful. And, and the reason why is it's easy sometimes to just, again, pull out the stamp, hit deny and say, here are your comments, and then it kind of, again, languishes. And I will tell you two things, one, I don't think it's providing excellent customer service, but the second one is, when we get those, when we get the person back sitting down at the table, now a project's languished so long that we have to reinvigorate all of our efforts and it consumes a lot of our staff time. That staff time that could be used to doing better things on better projects, working with other developers. So I tell everybody, don't do the typical process of just, again, reaching for the stamp, make sure we're explaining this stuff, make sure we're calling people, make sure that they understand, because I really do want everyone to look at, and we can't control the entire process, but I want all of our staff to look at from beginning to end on an average project, that is a reflection on staff. So if it takes nine months for Banner to come through, that's very easy for me to stand here in front of everyone and say, Banner has excellent architectural and engineering staffs, and there's no reason with that level of excellence on their side that it should take us nine months. That should go through a first review, minor comments, and immediately approve it within two weeks after that first review. So if it takes us very, a long time on a project like that, I know it's the fault of our staff. So like I said, there, there definitely are key indicators for me to look at.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One other question, can you give us an update on the Garden paving project, the bids were to be opened today or something?
Florence Gardens, unfortunately, I didn't bring all that information.
I have it, Chris. It's committed up here.
Okay.
So it's currently out to bid and the bid is closing on December 19th. And at that time, Chris and his staff is going to review it, it will go under legal review with, with our attorney and it will, it's part of his report, it will be on the first meeting in January as long as everything goes through, for approval.
Yeah, but today was the actual pre-bid meeting, so we had 12 contractors go out there. Not completely unique to the industry, but we require in the Town of Florence contractors to come out, we require them for the pre-bid meeting in order for them to bid because of some of the unique circumstances on some of the projects. Specifically, not just full-depth reconstruction, but the uniqueness, the demographic that lives in Florence Gardens 4 and 5. So we wanted them, if, if, if they have any real interest in the community, they'd make the drive, if they don't, we don't want them here, they can stay in Phoenix. So we required them to come out here and we had 12 contractors come out here, very similar to First Street, and we're thrilled with some of the large contractors that came out here again.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you for your detailed report, sorry for the other department heads that felt left out if we didn't have a lot of questions for you. With that, we have a second call to the public, would anybody like to speak at this time? Yes, sir.
Hello, my name is Robert Kramer again, I just wanted to reiterate what is happening with my project, it is such a small project and I put a lot of money into this and I am, was hoping to get this whole project done by Christmas. It's, it's taken two and a half months to get the first part of it okay by Chris's office, the second part of it now is going to the second month, it's over two months now, such a small project. I want to go tomorrow and order my windows, I want to order my doors, I want to order the sheet rock and I, I don't know, I don't want to have to sue the city, you know, but I feel that if, if, if things don't come, come about fairly soon, I've, I've had lumber that's been stacked on the side of my, my carport, I've had 15 to 25 pieces stolen out there already, yes, yes. And so I feel, because they're dragging their feet, I know that they're very busy and I apologize that I'm, all I want is this one part here done and I asked that he do it, I've asked him so many times, it's, it's just reiterating, reiterating, reiterating. I, I don't want to be a burden to anyone, but I feel that I have a right to build, I built the bottom part, the foundation, it was overbent, I put, used two-by-twelves, I used my joints, joints were two-by-tens. Everyone that's looked at my project has said, Robert, you, I can't believe you did this, you know, I did such a good job, you know? And I, I cut hair for a living and to be able to build, to build something is, is quite an achievement, I feel, but I, I do, I, my, my living room is still stacked with furniture, I had had a divorce and it's still stacked with furniture and I've, I've asked that his office expedite this, they keep giving me delays after delays after delays and, and I just want to make you aware of it, if I do have to file a lawsuit, that's, that's where it's at.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Now, one thing that I just want to say in all fairness, and I do like to know both perspectives, is for future, because we've had a lot of people come and, well, I don't want to say a lot of people, we've had a few people that have come and spoken in the past and a lot of times, they don't necessarily, I don't want to say it this way, but it's just going to, to come out very, very forward, they don't have that documentation that supports what they're saying and they're saying it into record. So what I would urge you to do is, you know, talk with Chris, he is the director, he can definitely help you, I just want to make sure that we're, you know, being fair to people that aren't here as well to, to speak on their behalf, because we truly do want to know both, both perspectives and appreciate you taking the time to speak to us this evening, but we just want to make sure that we're being fair to everybody as well.
I, I understand and thank you for hearing my gripes and, and everything tonight, I, I'm very sorry I had to come here and, and I don't like to have to get up and speak in front of people, but thank you very much for hearing me tonight and I appreciate it, thank you.
And you can also reach out to us, anybody can reach out to us anytime, our emails are all public information, it's right on the website and you can send us a message and say, you know, we're having a little bit of a challenge here and we can definitely streamline it.
I really appreciate that so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you again.
Okay, we have call to the council for current events only, I am going to mix it up a little bit tonight. And I am going to ask Mr. Hawkins to start.
Well, I'd like to thank all the staff for what a great light parade we had and the weather was probably the best I can ever remember for the parada and the light parade, it was gorgeous and it looked like everybody was having a great time, a good turnout, it was, it was really nice. I'd also like to recognize the Florence Future Farmers of America at, at the high school, they had competition from 12 different high schools in the South Central District at CAC on November 21st. And the Florence FFA came in second on the food science team ranking, they came in first, second and third on the wildlife individual ranking and the wildlife team ranking, they came in first and second. That's out of 12 different high schools and over 100 students. I just want to say that I was in the FFA all through high school and it's a very, very good organization, it's great for young people, it teaches you a lot about life and, and teamwork and it's just a great organization and I was really proud to see that we, out of 12 high schools, I mean, that's, that's amazing, but we're doing, we've got a good town going here, let's keep up the good work.
Thank you. Councilmember Colleen?
Oh, I just want to wish everyone a happy holiday, but also to thank Tara, our mayor, for leaving the songs on the Christmas parade. It was wonderful, everybody loved her, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes, I would like to also compliment our Parks and Rec Department for all the work that they've done for the parada and the light parade and the crowd that we had downtown, do we have any idea how many people were there? You didn't count them? But it was, I, I think, just extraordinary event, I was talking to the police chief earlier, we didn't have any incidents, it was a good crowd, everybody had a good time, you know, the kids were running around, you know, it's nice that we have such a nice, safe place to have these kind of events, you know, we all enjoyed it. And of course, I also want to publicly thank Jess for all he's done for the town and his guidance that he's given me over the years, thank you Jess.
Thank you. Councilmember Wall?
Well, first and foremost, I want to echo what John said and what Lisa said, I will personally miss you. You have been a great help to me with your knowledge and your history of the town and your interface with our citizens and I know that you will be missed and I wish you all the best. Second, I rode the float for the Junior Parada and the, the light parade and had a great time and Tara did lead us all in, in some Christmas carols and that was fun. It was obvious that she was a teacher because she had all the words down with the emphasis for the kids, which was great. The attendance I thought was outstanding, much more than, than years past, I said 10,000, I don't know if that's a reasonable amount or not. I also would like to publicly express my wish that next year, we have a tree lighting ceremony in one of our main street areas, I think that would go a long way to bringing people together, we could probably involve students to make decorations and get more of the community involved with that around a Christmas tree. And last, not least, I am sorry that I won't be on hand to attend the employee appreciation luncheon next, this week, Tara and I will be in Colorado visiting the Innovation Pavilion there and I just want to make sure that the staff and, and your staff know how much we appreciate all that you do for us and for the citizens of Florence, so thank you very much. So thank you very much.
And Councilmember Larson?
I just want to echo whatever Annals has said. First of all, Jess, thank you so much for being a happy, smiling face every time that I come in, and you've really been a joy to work with and just to have around. It's going to be a lot different without you here, so you'll be sorely missed. Also, I wanted to say thank you, like everyone said, about the parades. They were fantastic. My kids love riding on them. Minus my youngest, my one-year-old, he could have cared less. He was perfect. Not exactly my angel child. But yes, we all had fun, and it was a great time. My only complaint is that we will need a lot more candy next time, because that only lasted about a block, and then we ran out, and I felt bad for the people at the end because we didn't have anything for them, so.
So we sang.
So we sang. So we made up for it, but I don't know if our voices are as sweet as candy, but you know, we'll make that implication. Also, so I wanted to bring up, I don't know if anyone else has seen this, on December 14th, there's a 3D printer demonstration at the library. That sounded really cool, so I wanted people to know that that was an option and available for us. I hope everyone has a safe and happy holidays and enjoys this nice little break, and I look forward to seeing you guys at the luncheon.
And Vice Mayor Woolridge?
I think everyone's already stolen my thunder, so I'll just echo what everyone else has said, as well as a special thank you to Jess. You know, we've become good friends over the years, and we'll miss you, and good luck, and God bless you on your new endeavor. You deserve it, so have fun. And also to piggyback on Karen's idea about a tree lighting, another suggestion is maybe we can partner with the county and have a tree lighting at the courthouse. Just a suggestion I thought I'd throw out there. And I'd like to wish everybody, especially our staff, who are great, I'm always bragging about you, you know you're wonderful, even you, Chief. I'd like to wish our staff as well as our community a very blessed and merry Christmas, as well as a blessed and happy and prosperous New Year.
Thank you. So everybody has spoken very sweet sediments, and I echo them as well, and I hope everybody takes time to be with their families this holiday season and enjoys time with your family and friends. We will not convene until after the New Year, but we will be out and about. To the employees, again, as Karen mentioned, we will be in Colorado. However, your hard work and efforts are truly appreciated all throughout. We couldn't be here if you weren't doing what you do out there, so thank you. And with that, we need a motion.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn.
We have a motion.
Now we need a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. All agreed? Okay, we're dismissed.